Good evening, I would like to call the School Committee meeting to order of the Bridgewater- Rainham Regional School District on Wednesday, November 19th at 7:01 PM. Please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Please note, we are live streaming our meeting on our YouTube channel and the recording will be available on the YouTube channel following the meeting. I would like to introduce our school committee members and admin and attendants this evening for our regular school committee meeting. On my left, I have Mr. Salinas, Ms. Davenport, Ms. Hoy Thomas, Superintendent Powers. On my right, I have Mr. Fitzgibbons, Ms. Tijon Cisse, Mr. Gunther, Ms. Conrad Leverinto, and myself, Rachel King, School Committee Chair. We also have in attendance Assistant Superintendent Barry and Mrs. McDougall, our Recording Secretary. Vice Chair Loesch had a conflict this evening and could not be with us. First, on the agenda, we have correspondence and recognition. First, I have a report of community emails. We did have an email from a parent regarding a special education matter to which Mr. Powers responded. We had an email from a community member regarding the middle school sports program regarding the fees. Both Mr. Powers and myself responded. We received an email from a community member regarding a summary of PRS complaints from 2023 through 2025. I did respond as well as Mr. Powers. Email from Rainham Pinkcomb, a member regarding a capital item on the Rainham capital budget. Mr. Powers and myself have responded to this. We received an email from a school committee member regarding a blessing question from a separate community number. Mr. Powers did respond. We did receive a resignation letter from Ms. Mayneville on October 23rd, 2025, effective immediately. Regarding that matter, on October 23rd, 2025, the Bridgewater-Rainham Regional School Committee received a resignation letter from the school committee member Cleone Mayneville, effective immediately. We greatly appreciate Ms. Mayneville's time and contribution to the Bridgewater-Rainham Regional School District during her two-and-a-half-year service. During that time, Ms. Mayneville was also a valuable part in various subcommittees, including long-range planning subcommittee chair, where she played a pivotal role in streamlining the superintendent evaluation process. Enhancing its clarity, efficiency, and overall effectiveness. Ms. Mayneville always brought a different perspective and insightful questions to our meetings and subcommittee meetings. Pursuant to our amended regional agreement dated January 1st, 2011, the school committee was required to fill that vacancy within 30 days. Accordingly, the town clerk posted this vacancy requesting letters of interest. Regarding this, our three remaining members - sorry, I'm getting a little bit of a cold - from Bridgewater, as well as the nine Bridgewater Town Council members, met on Monday, November 19th, 2025, to discuss, interview, and vote to appoint a new school committee member from the town of Bridgewater to serve for the balance of the unexpired term until April 2026 town election. That being said, I would like to welcome our new school committee member, Mr. Matt Salinas. He is a Bridgewater resident for over 10 years and father to three children in the school district. Mr. Salinas, would you like to say a few words?
Good evening. I'm pretty loud, I'm not sure if this is on. I just want to thank you school committee members for giving us opportunity. I really look forward to working with the school and the students in the district. Most importantly, I want to learn again our understanding of working and being part of the school committee, to be able to be a thoughtful, committed member of the Bridgewater-Rainham School Committee, and really have the best interest of the students and the other stakeholders as part of my vision as a school committee member. So, thank you very much for last night, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you, welcome to the committee. And I know this was really tried by fire, we were voted in last night, sworn in this morning, and welcome to the meeting right away. So, hopefully it'll go smoothly, so we appreciate you volunteering and being here with us. Next, we have a recap of the Veterans Day programs with Mr. Powers.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. King. Yes, as you are aware, schools across the district celebrated Veterans Day on November 10th, day early. We wanted to make sure that we were able to schedule all of our programs. Many of our schools did various activities, both on the Bridgewater side and the Rainham side. But I do want to point out, obviously, as you know, because you've been able to have attended in the past, as have other members, the RAY organization here in Rainham always plans a very special day in tribute to our veterans at all three of our schools, Merrill-Law-Liberty and Rainham Middle School. I had the good fortune of attending two of those three ceremonies. And it's just such a special day to be able to welcome all of our veterans back to the building, many of whom have gone through our school system. And I know Ms. Watson always talks about this, one of our greatest days is graduation, when she recognizes and asks all of our future service men and women to stand and be recognized. And I think, you know, we all can agree, both towns, Bridgewater and Rainham, really, you know, the red, white, and blue runs deep through both communities. We have a very strong sense of patriotism, and it really was just a great opportunity for our schools to be able to recognize and acknowledge all of our veterans in our communities.
Thank you so much. I know I was able to attend the one at Law Liberty, and they're always a great program, so thank you for being there. Thank you for RAY, who always does these really important programs for us, so we appreciate it. Next, we have the five sick Title I donation with Mr. Powers.
Again, one of the sororities from Bridgewater State University had contacted one of our former school committee members, Ms. Holbrook, who had been working with them, had some contact with them over at the George Mitchell School, and they had done a fundraiser and donated backpacks to the school system. So, we do have those backpacks full of school supplies in our office. They are asking that we donate those backpacks to our Title I schools, which our elementary schools receive Title I services. So, Ms. Richards and I are working on identifying, you know, students in need that may not have backpacks or may not have school supplies, and we want to be able to give those out. So, again, a big thank you to that organization and their very generous donation. Yes, yes, thank you. So, the Greater Bridgewater Women of Today made a donation to the high school. We were floored by their generosity. Ms. Cantler came to the high school, met with Ms. Watson, and donated approximately $2,000 worth of gift cards for Ms. Watson to use for families in need, especially around the holiday time. So, Ms. Watson and her team have already identified the four families that require, you know, greater level of assistance. I know those families are so appreciative of the outreach and so thankful, again, for the Greater Bridgewater Women of Today and their organization and their very generous donation to the high school. So, again, it's $4, $500 of gift cards, $2,000 altogether.
Thank you, that is really, we really appreciate everything that the community does for us, especially now when we really couldn't, they couldn't use that, so thank you. Next, we have public comment. The school committee welcomes information, concerns, and opinions from those attending our meetings. In order to give those wishing an opportunity to speak and show compliance with open meeting law and other legal obligations and avoid disruption of the meeting, the committee will not engage with the speaker or one another in deliberation on comments as they are presented during comment periods. At its discretion, the committee may schedule issues raised by the speaker for deliberation at a future meeting. To reiterate, this is a time for members of the public to voice comments and concerns on agenda items, and the committee is not able to respond at that time. If you would like a personal response, please email the committee or Superintendent Powers directly following the meeting. The chair will now open up public comment for a period of 12 minutes for a policy BEDH, and would ask anyone that wishes to speak to please approach the microphone, provide your name and address, and please limit comments to three minutes. I will now open comment, public comment at 7:11 PM. We did have someone sign up, Mr. Jim Dupont, if you would like to come first. Well, you signed up, so first come.
If I didn't go in there, I'd have brought my own mic. James Dupont, 118 Elm Street East, Rainham, for the record. I just have a couple of things that I want to say to the committee. Got three main points to make, and I know you can't engage me with it, but I'm going to tell you right now, it starts tonight, this doesn't end. There's three points I want to make. Number one, you people are elected to carry out a constitutionally mandated task, public education. You are here to represent, advance, and protect the students. They are your primary responsibility, not the teachers, not the taxpayers, not the parents, the students, all of them. I attended the budget summit that you had a couple of weeks back, and I came away from it very disheartened. Because it seemed as though, in terms of part of the BR members, there wasn't a focus of making it clear to the member towns, this is our job, this is what we're here to do. Now, I have to say, these are blunt things. You're not here to work with the towns or help them balance their budgets so they can comply with PUP 2.5, which I helped write. Prior to PUP 2.5, there was fiscal autonomy of school committees. If budget was presented to a town meeting, and the town meeting could accept it or reject it, there were no changes. I think the way I see it is simply this. I think that the Bridgewater-Rainham Regional School District should present the assessments to the towns, and a deal is a deal. Pay up. And if they are short money, or they need to have an override, that's their problem. Your obligation is to develop a budget that will deliver the best education to these students, not balance the budgets of the towns. And it's time to stop, because this is the kind of the main point. It's time for our US committee members, and I did it for 18 years. It's time to stop accepting half a loaf. It's time to stop lording our local state representatives and state senators for how hard they work. It's time for them to step up and give you the money that you need to educate these children. Now, at the recent fiscal summit, one Bridgewater-Rainham school committee member, the audio over there was pretty bad. I heard the statement, "Well, there's the state, and there's nothing we can do about that." Hogwash. The way I see it, it's time to stop making excuses on the pretext of working with these people and blah, blah, blah. When I see legions of state employees walking out of state buildings with pink slips in their hands, then I'll know how hard it is for them as your state legislators. Because that's what they say, "It's so hard for us, we're so tight." Now, I've been following Chapter 70 and Chapter 71 since 1973. Now, one single year was that fully funded, ever since then, never once. Where'd the difference come from? The tooth fairy? Name one person in Rainham or Bridgewater who calls their state rep or their state senator when they get their tax bill from the town. Take as much time as you need. It's time to hold the people responsible, who have both the responsibility and the power to fully fund locally, all categories. Not just Chapter 70 and Chapter 71. Me, I'll be watching, because I've had enough of people accusing this district, I know the superintendent, and I know several of you, of bad management, overspending, generous contracts, hogwash. You're here to educate students, and you're doing a good job. I think the superintendent you have there is one of the best we've ever had, and I knew them all. I want to thank the committee for their time, and I look forward, quite frankly, to draw a line in the sand. Stop putting the burden on taxpayers at the local level who blame you instead of the people who could use the money that came out of this district to cut their taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. With no one else, I will close public comment at 7:18 PM. We do have another one at the end of the meeting, if anyone else would like to speak. Next, we have the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, which includes minutes dated October 22nd, 2025, the Reed's Annual Performance Report for fiscal year 2025, the Personnel Report, approval of payroll warrants dated October 16th, October 30th, and November 13th, 2025, and acceptance of gifts relative to an RMS car wash fundraiser, $2,000 in Walmart gift cards for families in need, and from the Greater Bridgewater, and also the Greater Bridgewater Women of Today, and five sick Title I donations for school supplies and backpacks. Motion made by, Mrs. Davenport, sorry, second by Ms. Conrad Leverinto, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have educational reports. Our first educational report is the Student Advisory Report. We did have a meeting. One of the things we did discuss that I wanted to bring up at our next meeting, when I did go to the MASCE conference, the Day in the Hill, which is the field trip that we do go on, or that we have gone on the past few years with the Student Advisory Committee, has been moved to March 30th. It's generally been in May, but it has been moved to March 30th, which is earlier in the season. The Executive Board at MASCE did say that the May meeting was so late past budget season. So, they're trying to really make an impact and move it earlier in the budget season. So, when we go up to the Capitol, we talk about budget, and the students get a chance to meet with their senators and representatives. They can now have more of an impact before the budget has been set. So, we'll be talking more about that in our upcoming meetings as well. So, we'd first like to welcome to the podium, Ms. Kaelis TJ Cisse.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I will be recapping the meeting Superintendent Powers and Principal Watson held with 12 selected students last Friday morning at the high school. A discussion was held on the impact of the failure of the override amongst the students and teachers. Topics of discussion included the long-term emotional effects to the students, staff, and families, class, and loss of course rigor, and pressure on the guidance department to fulfill hundreds of students' needs. Students reported that they or other students have had to settle in a level of the class even if they wanted to change it because of the large class sizes. After-school and extracurriculars such as clubs and sports have decreased engagement, and for a lot of students, they have to make the choice of only being in one activity or none. This has also affected teachers mentally, as they struggle to cater to around 35 students in a class equally. Additionally, the National Honor Society is in full swing of planning our Breakfast with Santa event in partnership with the art club. It will be held on December 6th from 8:30 to 11:30 AM in the BR cafeteria. The event will be fun-filled with over 20 kinds of crafts, breakfast, music, and photos with Santa himself. The event is cash-only, and we will also be collecting for Toys for Tots at the event to donate to children in need for the holidays. Mark your calendars, spread the word, and we hope to see you there. Thank you, and I now welcome Sophia Payne to the stand.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, School Committee and Superintendent Powers. Tonight, I will be reporting to you about the high school spirit week and the football team. The high school spirit week started this past Monday, and we keep it off of sports day. We encouraged all of our students to wear their favorite team player sports gear. On Tuesday, we switched that for teachers dressed like students and students dressed like teachers. There were a lot of sweat suits on teachers' side, and some full, full suits, it was very odd. And then, today was Anything But a Backpack Day, and we had some very fun replacements. I saw at least three shopping carts and one, what was it? It was something, it was a, yeah, for a little bit, next Friday, it was funny. Tomorrow will be our Decades Day, the seniors are going to take the 2000s, juniors with the 90s, sophomores with the 80s, and freshmen with the 70s. This upcoming Friday, we have our pajama day. Next Monday, by popular request, will be Adam's Day. Tuesday will be our class war, so you'll see all the school students dressed out in their different grade colors. And then, our final spirit day will be next Wednesday, where we have our Renovation Day as well as our pep rally. We have many fun activities and games planned, and it'll be a nice send-off to Thanksgiving break. I also have an update on our football team for you today. We've had an amazing season so far, driven well enough that not only have we made it into playoff, we were the third seed team. It's a huge accomplishment for us and speaks greatly on how we have improved, not just since last year, but also overall. Well, that by itself is cause for celebration. The team has exceeded expectations even more. Since the first time since 2017, Bridgewater-Rainham Regional High School has made it into the final four for Division II. This means that this upcoming Friday, we'll be playing in the semifinals. The entire team has worked incredibly hard in school so far, and we'll look at how far they have progressed and improved. Thank you, and I now welcome Sydney Smith to the stand.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I will be reporting on current actions of the Class of 2027 Student Council. On November 24th, the juniors and year girls will be going head-to-head in the high school's annual football game called the Lively. All of the 60 junior players, lots of them, filmed, and our class has a total of 11 coaches to help us win our games. The student council, with donations from local businesses, will run a concession space. Along with this, the student council has launched our Cumber Cookie Box. Community members will be able to order Cumber for our council from today till December 2nd. The choices include holiday birthday cake, frozen hot chocolate, cinnamon roll, biscuit, ice cream, or rainbow chocolate chip cookies in a four-pack possible. The cookies are your favorite, there's also supposed to be caramel brownie or peppermint chocolate cake to choose from. Any orders that are picked up on our designated pickup days of December 22nd and 23rd will be donated to the firemen and police officers of Bridgewater and Rainham. It's our hope to bring a little holiday cheer to the school discounterizer. Thank you for your time, and I now welcome Marissa to the podium.
Good evening, everybody, thank you for having me here tonight. I'll be reporting on the BR Math Team and the Music Honor Society try-in. The BR Math Team won the first competition of the season earlier this month. The team is coming back from being division champions two years in a row and is hoping for another win this season. We are also in the top 10, which means we might have an ability to go to states this year, which we haven't really been able to do in the past couple of years. We hosted the competition and had the highest scorer of the meet as a BR junior, Hank Ross. Other high scorers have contributed to the team's victory with Kevin Posa, Fletcher Ranky, Gus Berry, Eamon Nabbasi, myself, Marissa Cabral, Colin Horahan, Carolyn Ryan, Wyatt Cooley, and Jackson Cogsham. The Try-In Music Honor Society also hosted its annual trunk or tree event in October and had a very successful turnout. It had been one of our best years yet musically, creatively, and financially, would have raised nearly $1,000 to put towards the chapter. Thank you again, and I now welcome Jackson Cogsham to the podium.
Good evening. Tonight, I will be reporting on the recent virtualized 5th grade mentorship presentation that took place last Friday. This was the first of five total presentations to take place at the Williams Community School. This presentation took place in front of the entire 5th grade, and the next four will take place in the separate 5th grade classrooms. The presentation gave a glimpse of what the next presentation would be like. Each presentation is one module, where each module will dive into a specific topic, and each topic will include subtopics, such as brain development and code mechanism. All these topics relate to the overall goal of these presentations, which is the use of powerful substances as kids. Each module will also include several activities relating to these topics. The next presentation will be willing to occur on a separate floor, where we will break up into small groups and present it in individual classes. Thank you, and this concludes the student, school committee advisory boards on the report.
Great job, as always, thank you to the students for your report this evening, we really appreciate it. Next, we have the school improvement plan. First one we have is Mrs. Westow and Ms. Christine Richards from Merrill Elementary School, and Law Liberty Elementary School, double duty for you guys.
Good evening, Madam Chairperson, Superintendent Powers, and members of the Bridgewater-Rainham Regional School Committee. I am before you this evening to present the school improvement plan for Merrill Elementary School and Law Liberty Elementary School. Both plans are aligned with the district's student success plan and developed with the assistance from school administrators, staff, families, and members of our community. Both the Merrill School Improvement Plan and the Law Liberty School Improvement Plan are based on the four pillars from the district's success plan, which includes safety supportive schools, curriculum, instruction and assessment, operations, and human capital. At this time, I would like to share with you each plan individually, highlighting several action items for each pillar. For the Merrill School Improvement Plan, I would like to thank the members of our school council. Tracy Ray Ray, who's a teacher, Cory Bigelow, Parent, and Ellen Fisk, community representative. Under safest supportive schools, we continue to focus on expanding our school-wide PBIS initiatives. As a result of these initiatives, we increase positive adult and peer interactions complying to school expectations and the use of common language and routines. We are also providing all staff with professional development in the area of social-emotional learning. Under curriculum instruction and assessment, we provide teachers with weekly grade-level professional development in the areas of reading, math, and social-emotional learning. This ensures the proper implementation of our curricula and the sharing of best teaching practices. We also facilitate child study meetings to identify struggling students, document interventions, and monitor progress. We also have the school-wide implementation of second-step social-emotional curriculum. Under the pillar of operations, we continue our security training for staff with the assistance of the Rainham Fire and Police Departments. Under human capital, through our wellness committee, we plan and implement building-based wellness initiatives. For the Law Liberty School Improvement Plan, I would like to thank the members of the school council. Teachers Deb Collins and Sarah Sylvia, Parents Katrina Fisher and Fallon Dale, and Community Representatives- representative Ellen Fisk. Under safety supportive schools, we have multi-tiered systems of support, or MTSS, interventions that are scheduled three times per week. This includes WIN, W-I-N, meaning what I need now, where students at each grade level move to a different classroom to receive targeted instruction in a specific skill area. This includes students who may need extra support or students who may need to be challenged. We are also expanding our implementation of the PBIS initiatives and reviewing revising our PBIS handbook. We are in the process of restructuring our recess time. We recently surveyed students, asking their input on recess initiatives and routines. Through the support of our parent group, the LPO, we will put several of these ideas into action. We are also providing staff professional development in the areas of social emotional learning. Under curriculum instruction and assessment, we ensure the proper implementation of district curricula. We have an extensive child study meeting process that identifies struggling students, documents interventions, and monitors student progress. We have also implemented the school-wide social emotional curriculum of second step. Under operations, we have our building-based emergency response team in order, and we also conduct monthly walkthroughs throughout the building to ensure safe and positive learning environments. Under human capital, we have our wellness committee to review and implement our wellness policy. We also have a sunshine committee that sponsors team-building activities and promotes a positive work environment. I thank you for your time this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Do I have questions from the committee for Mrs. Westow? Oh, Mr. Guthrie.
Not a question, but more an observation, just recognizing that you are overseeing both schools. And having, being the father of a fourth grader myself, it seems like things are going very positive this year despite a lot of the challenges, and just wanted to commend you and the staff, particularly at La Liberty where my son is, but at both elementary schools for the hard work and putting their best foot forward every day for the kids.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
I just want to reiterate that I don't have kids in that school anymore, but I have heard from many parents that were really nervous how this was going to be and what it was going to look like this year, but there has never been a time where they have felt that someone wasn't in the building when they needed them, for the staff or for the children. So, I really commend both of you, how you've worked that out, so that there's always someone in the building when there's a need. So, thank you.
Thank you, and I have to say that this wouldn't be working without the help of Mrs. Richards, and also the help and support of Mrs. Burns, our administrative assistant, and Mrs. Chikering at La Liberty School, our administrative assistant there as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Westow. Next, we have the school improvement plan with Mr. Cruz from Rehnham Middle School.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Committee members, and Superintendent Powers. I'm happy to be here tonight to present the Rehnham Middle School School Improvement Plan. As you know, the RMS School Improvement Plan is aligned with the district's student success plan. This plan was developed in collaboration with school administration, staff, and families. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the members of the school council who assisted in the creation of this plan. Our co-chair Amy Alexander, special education teacher and district parent, Mike Texeras, social studies teacher and district parent, RMS parents Katrina Fisher, Susan Cashmanian, and Katie Lombardo, Sue Cantelli, PE teacher, community member and school parent, and Cameron Scheidelmeier, community member and RMS parent. As you know, the district's student success plan, which drives our school improvement plan, is built upon four pillars: safe and supportive schools, curriculum, instruction and assessment, operations, and human capital. Although we have multiple school-based action items built into our plan, I'd like to share the action items we're prioritizing this year. Under safe and supportive schools, we plan to continue to develop and expand our school-wide positive behavioral interventions and support as part of our ongoing PBIS initiative. We continue to recognize and reward students for exhibiting our core behaviors: safe, open-minded, accountable, and respectful. All staff in the building are encouraged to give specific praise when they notice these behaviors coupled with a raven's bug. Students can spend their earned ravens bugs at the school store, which is run by our student council, or enter into bi-weekly raffles. Items in the school store and incentives available in the raffles are based on staff input and student surveys conducted every year. This year, in conjunction with our partners at the Social Emotional Behavioral Academy, our district SCL coordinator, and our building-based PBIS team, we'll focus on developing tier-two and tier-three interventions and support for those students who require more support and benefit from small group or individual behavioral supports and interventions. These students are identified in various ways, including through our yearly DESA screener, where teachers score students on their overall and specific social emotional skills. Data is collected throughout the year through analysis of behavioral trends, including incidents in power school. Under curriculum instruction and assessment, we aim to strengthen our current and develop new strategies and systems for analyzing and utilizing individual student data. This will help us target specific areas of growth for individual students, whole-grade levels, and specific groups of students, and will help us identify where future improvements to instruction can be made, especially among groups of students who are vulnerable to achievement gaps. This year, building administrators at RMS and EOMS, along with district administrators, have begun tri-weekly data review meetings where school-wide and specific academic data is reviewed and analyzed with a focus on middle school students. These findings are then brought back to each building for a more specific breakdown. Some examples of data analyzed are IREDDI diagnostic scores, weekly IREDDI minutes goals, pair assessment scores, and common assessment scores. In addition to this, our faculty is focused on data analysis of all IREDDI scores and their common planning times, and are encouraged to meet with students individually to review their scores, areas of strength, and potential growth areas. We believe this will foster a greater sense of ownership over students' own academic growth and success throughout their challenging middle school years, and help instill a growth mindset where students focus on incremental improvements rather than becoming discouraged with a low score in a given area or viewing their own skills and abilities as fixed. Under operations, we continue to put an emphasis on student safety and security protocols. In conjunction with district leadership, our facilities department, and our custodial team, we've completed the trapdoor setup and a company and camera system for additional safety and security when guests are entering the building. Similarly, in conjunction with Rehnham Police and our school resource officer, we've reviewed and updated some emergency protocols and procedures. Our building response to emergency situations is reviewed frequently with students, both in large groups like school assemblies and in smaller groups like homerooms and advisory periods. Periodic Alice drills and fire drills are conducted so that staff and students are prepared, focused, and calm in the case of an emergency situation. This year, we have begun frequent previewing and debriefing before and after these drills so that students feel safe, calm, and supported during emergency or emergency drill situations. Under human capital, we've rolled out a staff recognition initiative where staff are able to nominate and recognize each other through a digital recognition form. The staff recognition team, consisting of administration and counseling staff, follows up with staff who have been recognized with that week's token of appreciation. Some of these kind words from a colleague are shared with the group at faculty meetings or in the weekly email to staff. Our goal is for our faculty and staff to feel recognized and appreciated for all of their amazing hard work, patience, perseverance, and dedication to our students and the RMS community as a whole. I'm happy to answer any questions the committee may have regarding our highlights or other questions about our school improvement plan in general.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Do I have questions from the committee? Mr. Guthrie.
Similar comments to Mrs. Westow, as a father of a seventh grader, certainly want to commend everybody at RMS and your work and your leadership this year at the school for what certainly on paper at the start of the year looked like was going to be a challenging year. It certainly is a challenging year, just because things are going as smoothly as they can doesn't mean it's not. I think all of us who have children at RMS are keenly aware of some of the class sizes are among the largest in the district, I think, in the seventh grade. But along those lines, I just wondered if you could speak at all about just sort of, you know, with class sizes, just how is the staff-staff morale, how have they been coping? You know, any concerns as the year goes on about the impacts that might have either on staff or on student learning outcomes?
Yeah, thank you very much. It is a challenging year, and I'm happy to say our staff and our students together are kind of just rolling up their sleeves, and we've talked a lot to students and staff. There's a lot of the same language going on in those discussions in both, that we have what we have here. The situation is not going to change for this year, so all we can do is put our best foot forward, persevere, and I think both groups of students and staff are doing that. The class sizes are difficult and challenging with physical space as well as learning when there's so many students to get to for a teacher. I think teachers are leaning on each other very well with common planning time and all the other times that they see each other throughout the day, which is modeling for the students. I think what we want to be modeling, which is we're going to stick together and do our best.
Excellent. Yeah, credit again to yourself and to the staffs at RMS, La Liberty, and RMS School. We appreciate everything as parents that you are doing with what you've been able to have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Thank you. Next, we have administrative and school committee reports. We have the report of the superintendent. It's going to be a presentation if everyone wants to have a seat so they can see the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the school committee, members of the administrative team, and guests here tonight in the audience. I did want to provide a few updates prior to getting into our assessment accountability presentation. I did want to recognize Mr. Bill O'Connell, who is currently our coordinator of athletics, wellness, and athletics. He was just recently recognized as the district eight. The state is broken up into multiple districts for athletics, and he was recognized by the Massachusetts Secondary Schools Athletic Directors Association as the District Eight Ted Demko Award winner. This award is given by this association to an athletic director and athletic administrator having five or few years of experience in the field, and someone that's made significant impacts on his or her school and the athletic and wellness department. So, we were able to recognize Mr. O'Connell today at our administrative team meeting, but I also wanted to give him a shout-out this evening. I also wanted to announce that we have hired our open special education administrator position, Mr. Dan DeLuca, will be joining us December first. Mr. DeLuca is coming to us from the Norwood Public Schools, where he has served as both the department head and team chair. So, he will be starting that Monday after Thanksgiving, and he will primarily, for now, be assigned to both our middle schools. As you know, as we've discussed here before, both towns, the town of Bridgewater and Rehnham, have requested that the district undergo a financial review for efficiencies. That is something that obviously the school committee worked through with the towns, and we move forward with that at this point. We did go out to bid. We solicited, we sent this information out to at least ten, I believe it was twelve vendors altogether. Unfortunately, we did not receive as many quotes back as we had hoped. We only received one. You know, it's obviously disappointing because we wanted to make sure that we had, you know, received the best quality of work. That's not to say that this one vendor won't provide that, but we have really nothing else to compare it to. So, at this point, the initial pull came in at fifty-five thousand dollars. The town of Rehnham this past Monday at their Fall Town Meeting did approve their portion of that fifty-five thousand, and we were just waiting for Bridgewater to do the same as they work through the town council process. Once those funds have been approved by both towns, we will then engage the vendor that provided a quote for us to complete this review. Our hope is to be able to start this review beginning to middle of December, depending on when it's approved, and I know both towns are hoping to have this completed by February. So, more to come on that, but I just want to provide a quick update. In addition, I did reach out to both towns, the select board and the town council, and invited those elected officials to tour our schools. Obviously, I think it's important that they see firsthand the current state of our classrooms and our learning spaces. You obviously just heard Mr. Cruz and Mr. Guthrie talk about some of our classes being very large, and that's common throughout the district. So, I think it's, you know, we talk about it, you're aware of it, because either you're a parent or a community member who's active in our schools, but sometimes we have others. Some of our elected officials may not be parents or, you know, may not have been to our schools recently, and so this is an opportunity for us to invite them and encourage them to tour our learning spaces. We established two dates, this coming Friday, the twenty-first, and December fourth. We've kind of divided the district, so this coming Friday, we'll start with the Bridgewater Middle School, Bridgewater Elementary Schools, and then finish at the high school, and then we'll repeat that same process on December fourth. We'll start at the Rehnham Middle School, adhere at Rehnham Middle School, go to the elementary schools, and then finish at the high school. Not much of a response, unfortunately. We, I know Ms. King plans to join us, Mr. Casanova Davis from the town of Bridgewater, and we only had four elected officials respond that they would either be interested or plan to attend. But, you know, we will welcome them and continue to share our information as we go through the budget development process. I also wanted to share, Kayla kind of gave a brief overview, we have started to meet with students. As you know, part of one of my superintendent's goals was to form an advisory council made up of our stakeholders, an advisory council of students, advisory council of staff, and then obviously being able to meet with our families. We were able to spend time last week with our students from Rehnham Middle School, O'Donoghue Middle School, and the high school, and, you know, I know I've shared it in the past, any time we can interact and be with our students is really the best part of our day, but they were very informative. They did share about their experiences, what it's like to be in a class of thirty-five, what it's like to be in a class of forty. We plan to share that in greater detail with you at an upcoming meeting, and I say that because I also want to be able to include the feedback that we receive from our staff. We actually have a meeting tomorrow with our staff after school as part of this advisory council. We did send them in a survey already because we knew not everybody would be able to participate, so we have that data as well, and then we have a meeting scheduled December third, I believe it is, with some of our parents. And so, my hope is if we can get it on the agenda for December, to be able to give you a greater overview of that. I think, you know, a couple of takeaways, you know, the students are very keenly aware, especially at the high school level, about the current situation. They are disappointed that they weren't able to get into all their classes. We talked to one senior, who I think he said he only was able to get into two of the classes that he wanted. All the other classes were not being offered, and so therefore he had to be assigned to other classes that he just unfortunately wasn't interested in taking. So, really, you know, that's been a challenge. We did hear from students, both at the middle school and at the high school level, how gracious they were and complimentary they were about the faculty and staff and how hard they're working, but they also feel as though that, you know, there is that connection lacking because there are thirty-five, forty students. They're not necessarily connecting with their teachers like they had in the past, and they're not also able to get the assistance that they require. And we've heard this from our teachers in the survey, that on the flip side, they feel awful about that because they know that they have thirty-five, forty students. We talked to a group at forty-three the other day, and again, they were so complimentary about the efforts of the teacher, and, you know, we're hearing from, again, the teacher on the other side who, you know, is really frigging on the inside because she knows she can't make those connections with all of her kids. She knows she can't get to all of her students on a daily basis. And so, it really is, it's disheartening. But again, I think, you know, as Mr. Cruz mentioned, not just here at RMS, our faculty, staff, our students kind of realize the situation they're in, and they are rolling up their sleeves, they're doing the best they can, but at some point, it's taking its point. They're doing the best they can, but at some point, it's taking its toll, it's taking its toll on our students. They do feel somewhat defeated, I know our faculty and staff. You know, as much as they try to put a smile on their face, they are feeling the pressures, they are feeling the stress. And, you know, I'm worried about that. I'm worried about our students, I'm worried about our staff. And again, we're doing everything we can to support them, to provide them necessary resources, but also just the camaraderie and the emotional support that both groups need. You know, just to share, and again, we'll get into this in greater detail, but I just pulled a couple quotes from the, from the students and from the teachers. You know, a teacher in her survey said, "My classes are significantly bigger. It is sad that I have so many students and I feel like I can't, I feel like I can't make a true connection with them. Things like group work are almost impossible because of the number of people." Some of the students, there's 43 students in one of my classes, which is a math class. The teacher does an amazing job with it, but since there are 43 of us, she can only help us so much. Another student, with writing assignments, the line gets really long to get help from the teacher, then it's the end of the class and you run out of time to get help. That's our reality this year and it's disappointing. But again, you know, it's a situation we're in, it's a situation we're going to advocate to get out of. We are going to do whatever we can this year to make sure our students and staff are supported as we, as we go throughout the school year. I am going to transition into the assessment accountability presentation. I think what obviously you'll see as we start to go through the data, there are correlations, as you can imagine, a year before being down 24 staff members, this year obviously being down 50 plus. When you look at the two-year trend of staff that we've lost, it's no wonder that our data has started to slide backwards. Again, I'm not going to read all the information on the slide. I know for most of you, this is information that's redundant, you're already aware of it. You know that our students are assessed in multiple areas, ELA, math, science, technology, engineering, and what was new last year for our grade eight students is they also took an assessment in civics. Obviously, what the intent of MCAS is to assess the student's progress towards meeting grade level standards and expectations. I just want to reiterate, and I know you know this, but just for anyone listening, MCAS has not gone away. The only thing that really changed was that MCAS is no longer being used for the competency determination. That is something that is now being developed locally, but the MCAS test itself is still here to stay. Students must take it, that has not gone away, and it's still being used for accountability purposes for districts. Obviously, I've included a link, I will post all this information to our website, but to the DESI page where our school and district profiles are. Gives an overview of the district and then obviously the assessment results as well as accountability results. I just wanted to start with statewide results. So you can see here the percentage of students across the state meeting or exceeding expectations in the various grade level bands. As you know, when they report out the results, they do do it by grade level, but then they also do it by grade level bands. Just for reporting purposes this evening, I've just done the grade level bands for you. The next column obviously is a change from last year. And then as you know, the state has been using 2019, 2019 as kind of their baseline while obviously prior to COVID. That was also something that I thought was very interesting and I didn't necessarily anticipate it, say from our high school students, but we asked them, "Do you still feel like COVID has negatively impacted you even five years later?" And they all agreed that it had, that it had and it still does. You can see obviously the state, although it's closing its gaps, you know, still has for the most part double-digit gaps from 2019. You'll see obviously similar data to, for us as well. Here are our district results again by grade level band. I did include the state data just so you could see where we are in comparison to the state, what our change was from last year, and then where our change is from 2019. You know, a few notable points here to make, you know, when you go back and look at our data from say 2019 and prior, for the most part, you know, on any given year, certainly there could be one assessment here or there, but for the most part, when you looked at all of our data, we were outperforming the state. Now you can see we are below the state, which is obviously disappointing. We certainly, you know, wouldn't want to just settle to be at 40% of our students at, say, at the state level. We want to be higher than that and that's our ultimate goal, but at the very least, we want to be outperforming the state average. You can see obviously our gap continues to be large from 2019, so that's something that, you know, we'll talk about towards the end, we're keenly aware of. We have had some success and I want to point that out and we'll get into greater detail in the future slides of a grade 10, science, technology and engineering. We did, again, make significant improvements there, so we're up 10 points from last year, which is great. And you can see obviously we are outscored in the state in that category. Here is subgroup data for ELA. Again, it's a grade level span of grades three through eight, not the individual grades. And you can see here, the column just to explain again is the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations. I did include prior year's data just so you can see the trends, 2023, 24, and then 25. And then that last column is the change from last year. So no significant changes from last year. Again, some positives, the percent of students meeting or exceeding expectations in ELA for grades three through eight for the African-American black subgroup did change positively, so that's great, I wanted to share that. But then you can see obviously, you know, other minor changes as well. And then this is the ELA subgroup for the high school, it's laid out in the exact same way. If you do see an NA in some cases, so I'll point this out, you've noticed that in 23 and 24, we did have the Asian student subgroup, we did have a percent of students meeting or exceeding expectations. We now have an NA for this year, obviously for the change column. That is because there weren't enough students in that subgroup to actually report out as a subgroup. So it doesn't mean we didn't have any students that would fall into that category, just that were not enough students by DESI standards to actually create a subgroup. Here's the math subgroup data, three through, please skip this line there, I'm sorry. Math subgroup data for three through eight. You can see the change again. And that's, you know, obviously trending in the wrong direction, right? That is not something that we are taking lightly and we'll talk more about that. Again, we did have some positives, so our Hispanic Latino and multi-race non-Hispanic Latino did show some positive changes there. Math subgroup for the high school. Again, positive change for our students with disabilities. But other significant negative changes, unfortunate for several of our subgroups. This is science, technology and engineering. Grades five individually, grade eight individually, and grade 10. Again, as we talked about, our grade 10 students, significant progress from last year. Here's the subgroup data for grades five and eight as a grade level band. Again, some positives to call out, our L and former L. Our Asian subgroup, and then obviously our multi-race non-Hispanic Latino group. And I think, you know, obviously I shared with you overall our grade 10 achievement data for science, technology and engineering. Here you can see the subgroup for that as well. You can see obviously many positives. We did have obviously one group, a slide back somewhat significantly, our L and former L. As, you know, we've talked about, you know, we had an influx of newcomers into the district, especially at the high school level. And so, you know, this is, you know, something we're looking into deeper. Obviously, a lot of those students have transitioned out of the district at this point. So in terms of going back and actually trying to provide intervention to a lot of these students and getting them, you know, further assistance will be somewhat challenging because some of those students are not here, but we look at, you know, sliding back 25 points from last year, that's significant. I know this may be hard to read just the size of it, but this is how we compare to our dark districts. And again, our dark districts are districts that the state compares as two, similar grade spans, similar special populations. And, you know, you'll notice that some districts are significantly smaller, obviously plenty being larger. We always typically in our dark districts are the largest group, but now Plymouth has been included. And these do change from year to year, so what you'll notice if you go back and look at years prior, not all of these districts will be considered a dark district. So they do change on an ongoing basis. So you can see we're the second largest of our dark districts, currently Plymouth being the highest. But what you'll notice again about our achievement is that we are towards the bottom in comparison to the other districts in the year. Again, all information for us to take in as a district and really look at our, you know, current practices as compared to what other districts are doing. The accountability, so obviously we talk about assessment and then the corresponding accountability. And the state has an accountability system. You know, and again, I'm not going to read everything here word for word, but you'll see how it plays out, but this is just more informational for you. But really what they're looking at is, you know, how our students did, how did they do in terms of their overall achievement? What type of growth did they make? They measure high school completion, English learner proficiency, and then there's additional indicators such as, you know, advanced coursework and then also chronic absenteeism. And then what happens is based on where you fall, what type of progress you make on your targets or towards your targets, you are labeled either as not requiring assistance or intervention, or requiring assistance or intervention. Thankfully, we have been in not requiring assistance or intervention and continue to be there. But even within that designation, there are different categories. So a school of recognition, that's a top performing school across the state, meeting or exceeding targets, substantial progress towards targets, moderate progress, and then limited or no progress. We fall into the moderate progress, so, you know, towards the bottom end of not requiring assistance, but then I'll show you that in a minute. So again, here's just a little bit more explanation about the different areas. Certainly you're capable of reading that, so I will read that to you. And again, just as I've shared, DESI calculates targets for each district, each school, and then each student group. And this, the data I'm going to show you in a minute is based on those targets and the corresponding points assigned. There's really four points, it could be a max of four points that can be assigned for each. And I do apologize, I know this is small, but the way this is broken down is really, they look at all students non-high school and then they look at all students high school. And within that category, the non-high school and high school, they also look at the lowest performing student subgroup as well. As I did share with you, there are a possibility of getting four points for each category that they do rate them in. And then obviously you can see the corresponding points given. So for example, for non-high school, there's a possibility of us earning four points for English language arts achievement. We didn't earn any because we didn't make enough progress towards our target. And you can see that across the board. Obviously, we did make some progress for our lowest performing non-high school students in ELA and math. And then obviously at the high school for our science, which isn't surprising based on our data. And then growth again, how much of our, how much, you know, growth are our students making? How much progress are they making towards their goals? So we did, you know, receive some points here, which is good. Obviously shows our students are making progress, but just not significantly enough to really increase their achievement. And then high school completion, obviously it's just for high school. So you can see four-year cohort graduation rate, doesn't mean we don't have students graduating in four years because we didn't get any points, it just means we didn't meet our target. And then obviously extended engagement rate, that means, you know, our students that might take an extra year, we're able to get them back into school and obviously we've earned all of our points there, which is great. And then annual dropout rate, again, we don't have a significant number of students dropping out, but yet we didn't, we made progress towards our target, but we didn't meet our target. And then you can see the additional indicators, chronic absenteeism. And the high school, I'll point out, received all their points for chronic absenteeism meeting, they lowered their chronic absenteeism rate. And they did get points for advanced coursework, which is great as well. And this is how it plays out in terms of our designation. So you can see on the left here, not requiring assistance, and it should hopefully show up green up there. We higher than that moderate progress towards target. You can see the number range is 25 to 49% and as I indicated, we fell at 35, so that's why we're in that category. So again, our mission is to provide excellence in education to all. You have seen this, this is something that I've shared with you in the past. It really lays out our path to excellence, how are we going to meet our target? And I truly believe that any significant change, and I've shared this with you in the past, takes three to five plus years. Obviously, I also don't want to stand up here and blindly defend our plan and say, yep, we have to stick with our plan that's working. I think it's an opportunity for us to really take a look at what we're currently doing and what things we know we can continue to do and what things do we really need to hit pause and reevaluate. Obviously, some of the things that we feel strongly that we can continue is to implement our new curricular resources. School committee's been so gracious to be able to purchase that. The state has provided us with some of those resources and those are all designated high-quality instructional materials by the state. So we feel like, excuse me, those are things that we can continue to do despite our current challenges. We can work to make sure that our systems are aligned, that they're equity minded and based on the instructional core, doing what's best for students, staff, and then also the content. We also feel strongly that we can continue to invest in our people who shape our students' learning experiences, so our staff. And although we may not have the financial resources from the towns to invest in our people, we know that we can provide them support, we can provide them professional development to continue to have them grow as educators. We also know that we can continue to partner with our stakeholders, students, staff, families in the community. What I want to be able to do though is to take a really strong look at our student success plan. Obviously, you heard tonight, you know, our school improvement plans are based on the success plan, but what I want to make sure, we started to actually do this exercise today with our administrative team, after we looked at this data, is to make sure that we're having high-impact, high-yield result strategies in place. And although, you know, when we look at these on paper and we feel as though that the plan we've laid out in our five-year student success plan was initially going to get us towards our target, I'm starting to, you know, hit pause and really take an opportunity to engage in ongoing reflection. Because if we're saying we always have to, you know, get feedback, we have to reflect on our practice, that's what we really want to make sure that we're doing. So this is an opportunity for us as an administrative team to really hit pause on our student success plan, really reevaluate it. And, you know, there are some things that, you know, unfortunately that we had hoped to be able to do, but we don't have the staff, you know, as you know, Ms. Richards is one of our, one of our coordinators of teaching and learning, we did have two. There were a lot of high-level things that were happening at the district level that Ms. Richards and Ms. Joyce, who was our counterpart and STEM, were responsible for leading. Ms. Richards is now currently assigned to a building and Ms. Joyce has moved on to out or to a more secure position. So therefore, you know, we really are saying, you know, some of these things, we're not so sure that we can actually accomplish and we want to make sure if we can accomplish them, that they're really going to have a high, high impact. So more to come on this, I did want to just, you know, share that, acknowledge it. We're not saying that, you know, the results that we're getting, and we talked about this as an administrative team, regardless of our situation, you know, our declining results are not okay. And no one is saying that, no one is saying, well, there's not much we can do about it. We're saying, what can we do about it? And so for us right now, it really is digging back into our plan. What, you know, if our situation doesn't change, what do we need to do to change? And so that's important for us right now to really self-reflect and to go through that process. So more to come on that. Obviously, I think across the board and I'm sure as school committee members, you know, these results are disappointing 100%. You know, we're, as a leader of the district, I, you know, I take full responsibility for this. It's something that I don't take lightly and it's something that, you know, I'm committed to making sure that our students do have better outcomes. And, you know, yes, there are some challenges in front of us, there are some roadblocks on our path here, but we have to figure out ways to get around that because, you know, I can't rely on things changing next year when in so many ways, we don't have control over that. But what we can control is what we're doing with our staff, what we're doing with our students. And that's why I'm committed to not just to the school committee, but to the community and to the administrative team. That concludes our presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. As you know, we say this all the time, you've heard me say this, we do have a collective responsibility. I know the school committee is behind our students and staff. I know obviously our staff has come together, but this is, and our community is really rallying around us. You saw that in the springtime, so thankful for their support. And we need to really develop a strong partnership with our towns to make sure that they are also, you know, sharing this responsibility as well. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powers, for that presentation. I would first like to say, as a school committee, we have three jobs. It is budget, policy, and the hiring and overseeing of Mr. Powers, the superintendent. So honestly, the failure is not on your shoulders alone for such a decline. It is something that we also share that burden of because the budget, policy, and overseeing you is on us. So this is not totally on you and your staff or your teachers or your students. It starts with the school committee. And we're five years past COVID. And while I acknowledge that, yes, COVID, students missing one to two years of school, that's a hard thing to do, and I see that with my own children, but we should be gaining some momentum. So we really need to take a hard look at our budget this year, where we're going to put our resources. As Mr. Dupont made a public comment, we need to really rethink our budget and what our, what our action is going to be this year. What our policies are going to be, what us as a school committee are going to do this year to change that. Because that is a hard fact that we are continuing to decline with all of our areas almost. And that's extremely disappointing as a school committee member. Who would like to comment, question? Mr. Gunther.
Sorry that I'm chatty tonight. I take a slightly different purview. I don't look at it as a failure of the superintendent, I don't look at it as a failure of the school committee, I don't look at it as a failure of the teachers across our districts. You know, when I look at those scores, the irony is not lost on me, and I'm not sure if this is supposed to be formed in a question, so if it is, I'll frame it. Don't we see, all see the irony that we just heard from Mrs. Westell, we just heard from Mr. Cruz, shared resources between buildings, large class sizes, and the work that's being done to try to create a great learning environment when we simply don't have the resources? And then we turn around and we have to look at MCAS scores that are declining year over year over year. All that tells me that's a failure of the towns, that's a failure of the state above all that has put a system in place and then refused to properly fund it and give educators like yourself, our principals and our other teachers, the tools and the resources needed to properly deliver on that system, while also boxing us into different rules, regulations, requirements, mandates, again, that we can't simply afford because they're not giving us the resources to do. I see those test scores, we all know it's going to be a difficult budget season, and my top concern is that people are going to look at those scores and go, the school district is failing, we need some type of a change within the district. We're talking about this, you know, the review of finances that we've agreed to do, which I think is important, but I also think it's not going to find enough resourcing to recover 50 jobs, let alone the jobs that we should also be adding just to get to, you know, normal and, you know, fair and, you know, what should be positive class sizes. So, you know, I hear as you speak how to heart, you know, you take those scores and, you know, and that's a sign of a great educator, and we're really lucky to have you and our other great educators here. But, you know, I'm just going to speak as a school committee member that it's not a failure of anybody here in this district. It's a failure of the state that's put a system in place that we can't possibly sustain.
Thank you, Mr. Gunther. I'll just say, I think the scores are disappointing, of course they are. You know, we went all on all of our kids to achieve, and I know, you know, people look at MCAS and say, it's a, it's a point in time, it's one day in time, and it is, because you kids can have good days and bad days, just like adults, right? But I do think, and I appreciate Mr. Powers taking responsibility and standing up here and saying, again, we need to do something better, right? We need, we need, not better, but we need to pause and relook at what, what we can do and how can we do it? Because we can't count on funding. With that, though, again, I go back to the funding and, and I go back to even what Mr. Dupont said earlier, is we are here to protect our students and provide the best possible education. And I just think we really need to take that to heart. Again, we come to budget, into the budget timeline and reviewing budgets, because we can't, we can't keep doing this. We cannot keep cutting teachers and staff. And I know from hearing from teachers, you know, it's hard to educate kids in a classroom when you're trying to count and make sure they're all in the classroom and where they're supposed to be. So I, again, I appreciate the work the teachers are doing. But I think there's, again, as Mr. Gunther just said, there are very systemic problems at a state level that are, again, helping or driving some of these numbers.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to reiterate, this is a resource problem. We provide a service which is providing excellence in education to our students. We cannot provide excellence in education to our students and provide that service without resources. Our resources are staffing, which is where our money goes to. Without money, we don't have staffing. And as you've heard, our, all of our scores are going down. Our teachers have too many students in the classroom, they can't dedicate those, the time to each student. So, yes, when it comes time for budget, which we have already started, we can see that correlation of a lack of funding, a lack of resources is contributing to this. And that's on us, it's on our towns, it's on the state. It needs to change, which is something we keep saying year over year. And we can see the hard facts of what's happening right now. So, do we have any other questions or comments? Ms. Waydon?
Yeah, a little off the tune of what we all said, just because I don't want to echo it. With the competency determination on our agenda tonight, is that attitude towards MCAS and the high school from the students, how does that change with that elimination?
So I, I think it's really just a reeducation of, you know, getting the students to understand that despite maybe what you've heard, this is still important. And also sharing that there's opportunities for them, such as the Abigail Adams Scholarship, the John Abigail Adams Scholarship. So that, you know, there are opportunities for them to still do well on MCAS and be rewarded for that. Obviously, it's not the competency determination, but there are other benefits to it. And just, again, getting them to understand that, okay, yep, you know, you think it went away, but it didn't. But it still counts for something for the school, still counts something for the district. And it's something we're still giving, you know, we're telling them, you have to take it. That, you know, that none of that has really changed. So I, I don't think, you know, I've been talking with Ms. Watson, I know they gave, just recently gave an assessment or retest, didn't have any negative feedback from, from that. So I'm hoping when the springtime rolls around that, you know, we won't have any challenges as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Powers. Next is the budget subcommittee report of myself, Rachel King, of the subcommittee meeting November 10th, 2025. On November 10th, 2025, the budget subcommittee met just, just before the 5:30 PM superintendent, the budget subcommittee met at 5:30 PM in the superintendent's conference room. In attendance were Mr. Fitzgibbons, Mr. Loesch, Ms. Davenport, Superintendent Powers, Assistant Superintendent Berry, Ms. Babalola, Director of Business Services, Ms. Robichaud, Treasurer, Ms. McDougal, our Recording Secretary, and myself. First, we had a budget, a fiscal year 2026 budget update regarding the enrollment update, which will be coming up with Ms. Cohen, so I'm going to move on from that. She will give further detail on that. We had a capital update. At the, at the October meeting, we approved the amended capital budget, which was sent to both towns for approval. During that process, Mr. Powers also was working with the towns, DSS and DOR to confirm how to proceed for fiscal year 2027 and beyond regarding capital. Specifically, if we will follow the regional agreement and approve capital in the fall separate from the spring operational budget. The town of Rainham has the capital budget, and that was approved at the town meeting warrant for approval on Monday, November 17th, 2025. That budget went past at the town meeting. Rainham FinCom had also, prior to that, asked that in fiscal year 2027 and ongoing that we provide estimates along with capital item requests to FinCom prior to submitting the warrant article and to be with them. The town of Bridgewater also had the capital budget on their town council meeting agenda for last evening, Tuesday, November 18th, 2025. It was referred to their finance committee, and we'll go back to town council for a second reading and approval at their next meeting. Once those are, have both been approved, we will start working on capital items for this year. Do we know when those might start, or are we going to hold them all now until the summer?
No, but once Bridgewater approves their capital, we'll start those projects. Obviously, Rainham approved this past Monday night, so if there's any specific projects to the Rainham schools that we don't need to wait for Bridgewater for, you know, we'll definitely start those. But Mr. Chaka and Mr. Schatz are eager to get going. Any of the projects that we can do while school is in session or on vacations, we will certainly try to do that. But we may have to actually wait and do some of the bigger projects over the summer.
Thank you. We did receive an update on activity fees. This year, we are making an effort to have the high schools specifically collect club fees, which we have in the past, but that has not been enforced. So we did review the collection of the attorneys, the activity fees. And the activity fees and sports fees will be reviewed for the winter and spring as well. We've had a brief update on the base and the Rainham Park and Rec program, which is taking over the RMAC program. Updated financial reports will be presented in January to ensure that that program has been taken over by Park and Rec, and that we are still on track to be not in a deficit again this year. Which, at our first financial report at the last meeting, we were on track and we were not in a deficit. We did have a budget monthly update with Ms. Babalola. We did review the monthly line item report. The budget has been frozen since October 1st, 2025, as we normally do. Capital projects are on hold until the towns approve those funds. And we are watching the sub-lines, utilities, transportation, et cetera, that are always lines that we watch, especially going into the winter season. Mr. Powers did just speak regarding an update on the operational review, so I will move on from that. He also, Mr. Powers also gave us an update on the status of the Collins Center budget work that they're doing. The budget recommendations and presentations will be presented in January. Mr. Powers will request and provide an interim status report in December to budget subcommittee. Regarding fiscal year 2027 budget discussions, Mr. Powers and the business office have started working on the fiscal year 27 budget, where to cut costs, what increases that we are expecting, and also specifically focusing on health insurance. And I know that Ms. Conrad Laberinto is working with negotiations regarding the PEC. So we are hoping to have budget projections by the beginning of December. We will be meeting with FinCom prior to that on both sides of the town. And we will be meeting with the joint, both towns on January 21st to discuss the budget. And then prior to our school committee meeting, which is January 28th, we did also approve October 22nd, 2025 budget subcommittee minutes. So there were no voting items to take action on, those were just all updates and statuses. If there's any questions regarding on any budget items. Seeing none, I do, this, I know there was many mentions of Chapter 70 listening sessions. And I know that Ms. WayThomas and Ms. Conrad Laberinto were able to attend this evening. I had a work conflict come up, so I was not able to be there. Ms. Conrad Laberinto, do you want to give a brief update on that?
Sure, Mrs. WayThomas, feel free to speak up, you were there tonight. So tonight, in Lakeville, there was the fifth session that the DSS and the Department of Labor or Labor or DLs? Or the DLs? I don't know. How they held a hearing around, it wasn't labor, around Chapter 70, and to seek feedback from stakeholders around the funding mech, around the funding formula. I would say the, this was the fifth session, there was a virtual session also, I believe, last night. And there is one more session, I believe, in Newton. At the session tonight, or this afternoon, in Lakeville, there was probably somewhere between 70 and 80 people there. Most of the folks, I would say, from Bridge Island was represented well. There were four council middlers from Bridgewater, two parents, and myself, and this is, and this is WayThomas, WayThomas that were there. Of those folks, six of us spoke, or seven of us spoke, seven of the eight spoke. Many of the things that came across were concerns with how the state is funding towns, then increase that districts are facing around transportation, insurance, utilities, special education, and the rate of, the rate they use for inflation in Chapter 70 has not kept up with the, the rate of inflation that school districts are facing. I will say, many of the towns that were, or many of the folks that were there tonight were town council members, selectmen, representatives from the teachers' unions, school committee members, a few parents. Majority of the folks were there from actually smaller, what I would call smaller to medium-sized towns in the southeast. Only, what I would say, large, there was only one large town that was actually present tonight. So our report is supposed to be forthcoming, I tuned up in the timeline, from the folks that are collecting all this, and for these, from the, information from the listening sessions. December of '26, so, summer of '26 is supposed to be a report coming, and then that goes to, I guess, legislatures, I don't know what happens with the report.
Thank you for being there, Ms. Conrad Laberinto and Ms. WayThomas, I appreciate that. The only other item of note regarding budget, Mr. Powers did advise Budget Sub just of a concern at the high school regarding the roof. There were some leaks on the roof and some areas that the membrane was separating. So that is something that Mr. Chaka is looking into regarding, do we potentially need to repair that? Are we looking at a potential roof replacement in the future? So, nothing for action, but it was something that he brought to us that has been something of a concern. If we do have actual leaks for the gym roof at the high school, that could damage the gym floor, which would be extremely expensive. So more details once he looks into that and brings that to Budget Sub. But just something for the committee to note, upcoming capital item. Next on the agenda is just a brief report of MASCE Annual Conference that I attended. I attended the annual MASCE, MAS joint conference in Hyannis, November 12th through November 14th, 2025. I participated in multiple workshops and events. Each year, I try and focus on specific issues that are pertinent to our district or to me specifically as a school committee member. This year, many of the workshops I attended focused on building more positive and collaborative relationships between the school committee and the towns as well as the community. In addition, I also focused on legislative and special education updates and budget concerns. I did list in here many of the workshops I attended, if anyone wants to review those, I won't go through all of them. There's also some notes on some books that I could recommend as well. But there were some great speakers. I know this year, we only did one get to, we did put in the budget one ticket regarding the conference. I'm hoping next year, even with budget constraints, that we could have another one. I think it is extremely important for myself, going to those workshops, to learn what other school committees are doing, what other towns are doing, build those relationships and networking with other towns to see how are they addressing their concerns. We all have the same concerns regarding budgets, overrides, working with towns, working with the community, communication. It's all the same problems, whether they're a small district or a large district. So I find it extremely important to talk to them, even when we're feeling down and we have a lot of challenges, to talk to them about maybe different out-of-the-box ideas that they have. So I think it's So I think it's extremely important, especially making those connections and getting new ideas when we're there. I also did attend the Resolutions Clinic, which was on Friday. So, on Friday, I attended the delegate assembly. We voted in the new executive board officers and approved last year's minutes and financial reports for MASC. MASC brought forward six prior resolutions that were set to expire, and those were all passed unanimously to continue on as slated resolutions. The one new resolution they had this year was removing BMI testing from schools. This passed notes during the debate in common period. The current BMI protocol has no action steps for referral for health services, unlike screening for vision, hearing, and scoliosis. There's also a mental health component that has been noted by many nurses that concerns administrators, nurses, parents, et cetera. So that did pass, so that will go to the MASC Executive Board. In addition to that, they are going to be focusing on resolutions from last year regarding budget concerns. And that concludes my report regarding the MASC conference. Next, we have policy update, Policy Subcommittee Report with Mrs. Conrad Laberinto.
Thank you. The Policy Subcommittee met on, sorry, November 10th, 2025, and attendance was myself, Mrs. King, Mrs. Hoy Thomas, Mr. Gunther, and Superintendent Powers, and Mrs. Barry. At last meeting, remember, we waived the first reading for the competency determination, IKFE. We did not receive any additional feedback or any comments since our last meeting. So at this point, I would make a motion to waive the first reading, IKFE competency determination.
Second motion by Mrs. Conrad Laberinto, second by Mrs. Hoy Thomas.
Oh, the second reading, yes, sorry.
Yes, wait the second.
Wait the second reading, sorry.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any votes?
And at this time, I would make a motion to adopt policy IKFE competency determination.
Motion made by Mrs. Conrad Laberinto, to a second. Second made by Mr. Gunther. Any discussions or questions on that one?
I would just remind folks, is, we did not add any requirements into the competency determination to pass any kind of specific test. It's more around their grades at the end of the year would determine whether you need the competency requirement.
Seeing no other questions, all those in favor? Any opposed?
Next is Policy EFBA, School Food and Nutrition, around meal modifications. Again, this was something that was recommended that review by MASC. The school committee reviewed the policy at its last meeting, determined that changes would be added to the current wellness policy, because many of this, much of this falls within that policy. In the meantime, due to new DESI guidance, the policy needs to have further updates, since the policy now needs to include language, specific language surrounding physical education curriculum initiatives. The subcommittee agreed that we would wait for the policy to be completed and those parameters, and then we would go back and review that final version, hopefully, in December. So no action was taken at this time, was taken. And the next policy that we reviewed was Transportation Services for Children. Again, at our last meeting, Mrs. Hoy Thomas had inquired whether or not parents could formally waive the right to take the bus by filling out an opt-out, an opt-out form. They would fill out an opt-out form if their child were not to take the bus. Ms. Hoy Thomas felt that this could result in significant costing. It would be our regional school district, and fewer buses would be needed. Mr. Powers did say that many families hold seats on the bus just in case they need it. He was going to contact Lucini Bus Lines to obtain a report of eligibility versus who actually rides the bus, to determine how many families may qualify who are actually using the bus, and they would get back to us. And then we talked about potentially surveying families around some of this. So no action was taken at the meeting. This is an ongoing conversation around this, around this policy. The next policy that we reviewed or talked about was IJNTE, was district issued electronic devices. Mr. Powers and the high school principal, Ms. Watson, and the director of technology would like to move to be our regional school district issued electronic devices at our high school. So currently, there are students more at the high school that are using personal devices versus our Chromebooks. And some of the challenge around that is those personal devices don't have firewalls. They don't protect around any kind of security breaches or sensitive student information. And there's been some challenges, we'll just put that out there. Particular, I have high school students, I know what some of these kids are doing, or I've heard through the grapevine, particularly where we've gone to kind of no cellphone policy. Kids are bringing in their MacBooks and texting friends on their MacBooks. And that's not able to be stopped, or any of the security things when they're using those versus using our devices. So we are considered to roll this out in fall of '26, with the announcement of these changes coming in the spring of '26. The table was, was table, excuse me, the policy was tabled until the spring, and no action was taken. And the next was BDA, School Committee Organizational Meeting. I brought this policy forward to the subcommittee's attention around the rotating school committee chair position each year, feeling that it is very problematic. I explained that it takes a year just to get the lay of the land as the chair. It would be comfortable in the role and establish a relationship with the superintendent. Unfortunately, probably seven, eight years ago, the, at that time, the committee felt they needed to change the policy in requiring the chair to rotate to towns each year. That was for multiple reasons. I would say is, I reviewed policies from 10 to different, 10 to 14 different regional school districts, and none of them have this requirement to rotate the chair between towns every single year. One thing I do want to add, by removing the rotation language does not change the requirement that the chair needs to be voted on every single year by the committee. So I'm sure there's going to be some discussion around this. But this time, I would just, again, to put it on the floor, like, I would like to waive the first reading of BDA, School Committee Organizational Meeting.
Mrs. Conrad Laberinto has made a motion to waive the first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gunther, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I guess, I know it's just the leaving of the reading, but before we, again, we will go back and review this again for a second time. But I guess I would like to ask from committee members here, if you have feedback on this right now, thoughts, data, yeah? I'm not technically opposed to it, I just had a question, because I think when they created, right, it was because of the two towns and to have, because that's a co.
Okay, all right. So this was changed in 2021, I believe. I had only been on school committee for a few years. Prior to that, Rainham had been, I think it was Mrs. Riley and/or Dr. Prigwodowski, we had had a Rainham chair for quite a long time. They are voted in every year, but it had been one town, which had been Rainham for quite a while, which had made some hard feelings for the other town. So it was approved. I don't, we have a brand new board. I'm the most long-term serving, and that's only seven and a half years. So there's been a lot of turnover, so right now, it's very difficult, year to year, switching back and forth. We've had members that, where they're all new from that town, they might not feel comfortable for serving as chair. And like Mrs. Conrad Laberinto said, it also takes a while to build your relationship with your superintendent, between the committee. So it's, it's a lot of turmoil and turnover just be switching year over year, especially if you don't have also someone that's willing to serve and that wants to serve.
I would say there are other regional districts, again, no other regional districts policy that I looked at does this, where there are multiple towns. And there are other regional school districts, again, that have multiple towns where the chair is with the same person for eight years. That is not unheard of. I'm not saying that's what we should do. I think we should have the option, if we wanted to keep the same chair, that we have the option to do that. And right now, our policy does not allow us to do that.
Do we have other questions, comments? Okay, like Mrs. Conrad Laberinto said, this will come back. If you have other feedback, please let her know. This will come back for a second reading at the December meeting as well.
The only other thing was, there was a conversation at the committee to review our public records request policy. That I was tabled and was agreed to be reviewed at a future meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Conrad Laberinto. Next, we have the October 1st enrollment report with Ms. Cohen.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Committee members. Good evening, and to you all. I'm here to present to you the October 1 seat count, which is submitted through our Simmons submission each year. It's taken on the October 1st of each year, and it's a snapshot of students attending our district on that day. So you have the paper in front of you. So I will just read the totals for each school, and if there's any questions you may have. So at Mitchell, currently, we had on October 1, 911 students. At Williams Intermediate, there was 818. At Edward J. O'Donoghue Middle School, there was 851 students. At Merrill Elementary, 281. At La Liberty Elementary, 533. At Rainham Middle, 691. Therapy Day was eight students. At the high school, it's 1,318 students. Our itinerants, who are service-only students, were 21. In the Excel program, were 32 students. In out-of-district, were 44 students, for a total of 5,508 students. I do want to tell you that this, these numbers, they're ours. We are still in the reporting period. And so as this does say, these are the final numbers. There could be a give and take on these numbers once the final two reports are submitted. So I can always come back and tell you about those differences. But currently, it's 5,508 students. Of that, 27 students are non-residents. So of the student body, 5,481 are residents of either Bridgewater or Rainham. 3,407 were Bridgewater residents, 2,074 were Rainham residents. And that's your student population. 3,407. 27.
And I did just want to clarify a point too, because obviously, I've been sending out enrollment data to the community. You'll notice our numbers are slightly different, only because the enrollment information that I've been sharing to the community does not include some of the students that Meg just went over, such as the itinerant service-only students, the Excel students, and then our out-of-district students. So minusing those numbers out, but they're not included in the data that I share on a regular basis. So these are just Meg sharing the students that we are responsible for overall. But again, the data that I've been sharing doesn't necessarily capture our out-of-district students, Excel students, and our itinerants. Those students just sitting in our seats. I don't remember which date this was, was this the last one? So as of last week, again, we had roughly 5,453 students sitting in our seats. So again, that's November, we know we've had new students enroll already. So as I've shared, we are, you know, continuing to increase. But that, you know, that's why you'll, you know, see some discrepancy in the numbers. It's just because the numbers here, the 5,453, do not necessarily include the itinerants, the service-only students, Excel, and out-of-district. Those are only in-district, sitting in our seats.
Ms. Cohen or Mr. Powers, can you let us know, based on enrollment because of the budget, how many students we've lost in this year?
We're approximately down a little over 200 students when we look at enrollment from last year. Last year, I think, you know, around this time last year, we were about 5,682. And so obviously, we're, you know, 5,400 plus. So we're partially down 200 students from last year, which obviously defied the trend that we were on. As you know, we were, we had been increasing our enrollment every year by approximately 100 students. And so we were on pace, originally, if that held true, to be at 5,780 students. And unfortunately, we, you know, are now down 200 students overall. So, you know, we've seen an increase in the number of students leaving the district in terms of school choice, obviously, the vocational programs, and then, you know, some of the private schools as well.
Thank you. Do we have questions on the enrollment report? Thank you so much. Next, we have Facilities Report, Mr. Chaka.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the committee and Superintendent Powers. I'm pleased to report that the overall state of facilities across the district remains strong. As you know, we currently maintain seven buildings totaling approximately 1.1 million square feet of space. That's 1.1 million square feet of space that must be cleaned, maintained, and operated every single day. Beyond our buildings, our responsibility extends to nearly 100 acres of land in Bridgewater. This includes a high school stadium and track, four softball fields, three baseball fields, the O'Donoghue Stadium, which serves as a soccer, lacrosse, and flag football field, multiple practice grounds, and the laid-up landscape grounds surrounding all district facilities. It is a significant operational footprint, and our team works hard to ensure that these assets remain in excellent condition for students, staff, and the community. This year, one of our major accomplishments has been the successful overload of our new maintenance management system, FMX. While we expected a few minor glitches during mid-transition, overall feedback from both staff and community has been very positive. FMX has already proven to be a valuable tool, streamlining work orders, improving communication, and enhancing scheduling for our facility use. To give you a sense of activity, as of November 14th, we have had 1,917 total scheduled events across the district, totaling 11,425 hours of use, which is an average of just under six hours per event. On the maintenance side, since September 1st, we've had 685 work orders that have been submitted, and our team has completed approximately 87% of these requests to date. As a breakdown of those requests, right now, we've had 90% of those requests, which is a which is plumbing, 18% is HVAC, 13 fall into the other category, 12% electrical, 11% carpentry, and 11% landscaping, with the remaining percentages including pest control, safety and security, vehicle maintenance, and a variety of miscellaneous needs. One of the most significant enhancements FMX brings is its integration with our asset tracking initiative. Every repair, every inspection, and every service requested or associated with any major equipment, from boilers to rooftop HVAC units, pumps, district vehicles, hot water systems, will all now be logged and retained automatically in the system. As this data grows, it will provide us with a full service history on every major asset. Most importantly, future capital decisions will no longer rely on assumptions or anecdotal information. We will be able to plan using clear empirical data, focusing our resources on equipment that demonstrates the greatest need, improving budgetary accuracy, and supporting smire of life cycle management. Our facility operations remain supported by a hard-working team of 46 employees, including six custodians, four maintenance personnel, which include a plumber, a carpenter, an electrician, and an HVAC technician, two utility workers, one of them being a great mechanic who has already saved the district thousands of dollars in repair costs, one head groundskeeper, and 33 custodians district-wide. The team provides daily coverage of all building and grounds to highlight, and to highlight just one example of the workload they manage. Each night custodian is individually responsible for cleaning between 32,000 and 37,000 square feet of space every shift. Their efforts deserve recognition, and we are extremely grateful for their dedication. As the committee is aware, the 112 budget period imposed limitations on what we could accomplish over the summer. Despite these challenges, we move forward with as many projects as our time and available funds would allow. Progress continues on our priority needs, and we remain committed to ensuring all facilities are safe, functional, and well-maintained. District-wide, we have also begun systemically collecting empirical data on all major infrastructure assets, including 23 boilers, nearly 50 rooftop units, hot water systems, district vehicles and grounds equipment, and other essential building systems. The initiative focuses supports preventive maintenance planning, accurate forecasting, and long-term capital improvement strategies. Enclosing our facilities continue to be in strong condition. The rollout of the FMX has already delivered tremendous improvements in efficiency, communication, and accountability. Though our budgetary constraints slow the pace of summer work, our team continues to make steady progress in maintaining and enhancing district assets. And with the addition of comprehensive asset tracking, we are better positioned than ever to make informed, data-driven decisions that will benefit the district for years to come. Thank you for your continued support, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have questions for Mr. Trunka? Ms. Conrad LaBrento?
I would just like to make a comment. I've probably spent the last four or five weekends, every weekend, at the high school for cheer. And there have been a million cheer competitions there of all ages. We are renting out the gym space every weekend to cheer competitions. And I would commend your staff. They have done a phenomenal job being there at 10 o'clock at night, cleaning the gym. And there's lots of people, and it is packed at the high school every weekend. If you have not been there to see it over the last few weekends, but your staff have done a phenomenal job keeping the building clean and upkeeping with the amount of people coming in and out of the buildings.
Revival sorts, too, yes.
Thank you.
That's what I'd like to see, revival.
Yes.
Ms. Hoi Thomas?
Just a quick question. With FMX, will you be able to create, like, an aging equipment report from that?
Yes, as we gain more data by putting in everything that happens on a daily basis, it will start, the data will start to populate more and more every month as we maintain each piece of equipment.
Any other questions? Thank you so much, I appreciate that. Next, Dunder New Business, approval of general ledger warrants. I will entertain a motion to approve general ledger warrants dated October 16, October 30, and November 13, 2025. Motion made by Ms. Hoi Thomas, Ms. Davenport. Sorry, second by Ms. Hoi Thomas. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, so I did mention this earlier, I just want to highlight this. I will entertain a motion to move the January 21, 2026 school committee meeting to January 28, 2026. Motion made by Ms. Conrad LaBrento, do I have a second? Second by Ms. Davenport. Just a note, we're going to be holding a joint meeting with the towns and the school committee on January 21, 2026. They had requested that we meet with them prior to the presentation of the preliminary budget. So we're going to, we are going to move our meeting back a little bit so we can meet with them on the 21st, and then have the preliminary budget presentation on January 28. That is the reasoning for that. So I will entertain a motion regarding that. Did I already, okay, sorry, it's getting late. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then, along with that, I will entertain a motion to change the venue for that January meeting from the Rayham Middle School to the lecture hall at the high school, just so we have a better sound system and better presentation access for the budget presentation regarding that. I will entertain a motion regarding that, do I have a first? Motion made by Mr. Gunther, do I have a second? Second by Ms. Hoi Thomas. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I do not have any other business. Do we have anyone for public comment? We do have our second public comment period. Come right up. As, again, earlier, please state your name and your address, and leave at your comments, two under three minutes, please.
Dave Patrick, Vice President of the BREA. We'd just like to state that the $55,000 that's being proposed for a audit/review of the school district would be much better spent on the salary of teacher for half a year, at least half a year, maybe, maybe even more. Alright, that would reduce class size somewhere where it's really important, what most needed. That could also bring back an elective at the high school for the second half of the school year. I don't see how we can justify spending that kind of money when we're in the situation that I was not wearing.
Do we have anyone else for public comment? Seeing that, I will close the public comment at 8:59. Regarding announcements, Rainwater Players has their high school musical on Saturday, November 22, and Sunday, November 23. So please, everyone go and see the show, they do a fantastic job. The next Budget Subcommittee meeting will be Monday, December 8, at 5:30 in the superintendent's conference room. And the next regular scheduled School Committee meeting is Wednesday, December 17, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. at the lecture hall at the high school. Do we have any other announcements? Mr. Fitzgibbons? Thank you. Yes, Happy Thanksgiving, the holiday is sneaking up on me for next Thursday. Seeing that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn at 9:00 p.m. exactly. So moved by Ms. Conrad LaBrento, a second? And Ms. Hoi Thomas, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?